Good evening. We're here this evening on tonight's code hearing, Public Nuisance Civil Penalties. I want to thank everyone for coming to tonight's hearing to learn more about the city's proposed legislation that will create permanent legislation. Oh goodness, I apologize. Give me just one second. I want to start off by thanking the following individuals for being here and helping to create this proposed legislation. Scott Messer, Director of Department of Building and Zoning Services; Director Steve Shoney, Director of Department of Development; Ryan Kelsey, Analyst in Building Compliance Section; Steve Dunbar, Assistant City Attorney. And I believe John is behind us. John Oswald, Councilmember Klein's office, unfortunately, which no other councilmembers are present. I want to acknowledge that we will accept speaker slips until 5:30, and please submit speaker slips to my legislative assistant Devon Perels, who can be found sitting behind me. Just to give a little bit of background on tonight's proposed legislation, it's certainly our intention and efforts to provide new tools to help our city officials better serve our residents. And with this proposed legislation and all others, it's always an effort to better serve our citizens and also to make sure that the city is achieving our goals that we know will improve our overall experience and quality of life for our residents. Whether it be increased penalties for repeat trespassers or create a deterrent against properties becoming a public nuisance, it is always our efforts and intentions to increase the quality of life for our residents. Since I came on council, we have sought several remedies for our vacant, abandoned, and blighted properties in several of our neighborhoods. And I hope that tonight, we will have an opportunity to share with you, and you will see this as the next logical step, to follow the city's vacant and abandoned properties program and to further achieve our goals of reducing and eliminating nuisances and blight throughout our great city. We have seen that many owners of many of the public nuisances hide behind limited liability companies to protect themselves from liability. The city cannot pursue criminal action against these LLCs. And I'm sure we'll elaborate a little further in tonight's presentation in regards to that so that the public can better understand sometimes when they're frustrated about properties that are owned by these LLCs and wishing that there are steps that we would take. Our current civil option can take more than a year to be settled. Under today's proposed legislation, we still have our civil and criminal processes. But now we're proposing to add the additional deterrent of $1,000 per day penalty for severe public nuisance properties. Under this proposed code change, due process will be guaranteed, and all opportunities will be given to owners to address issues. The high penalty is required for an effective deterrent, but the city will continue to work with owners to get properties sold and renovated. The civil penalty is an additional tool for our code officers and building inspectors to stop the spread of blight in our city. In an effort to keep up with blight, we can't continue to allow it to become pervasive and continue. I am excited that the penalty can be applied to both commercial and residential properties anywhere in our city. It can be another tool for going after some of our worst hotels as well in the city. Over the years, the city attorney's office has worked diligently to hold LLCs accountable, and many of their efforts have been very engaging of the public, the community, and all neighborhoods who are impacted directly, and not just where they operate, but where people live. And it is always important that we take consideration to where people live and not just where some people operate, but also we're understanding that some of the neighborhoods are where people live, where they go home to, where their families walk to school, walk home, and enjoy recreational activities as they pass by blight on their own streets, sending a message to the young people in our community if we allow this to continue to take over our neighborhoods. So without further ado, I'd like to start off by turning the hearing over to Director Messer, who will provide some additional, the presentation on tonight's proposed legislation. Director Messer?
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to spend a little time walking through a little background and information on the new proposal. On the screens, we've loaded a short presentation that I'm going to walk through to just sort of summer, give a summary and some background. First of all, the city of Columbus, like many cities, is dealing with a multitude of residential and commercial properties that represent public nuisances and are a blight on our community and our neighborhoods. So currently, for properties that are public nuisances, Building and Zoning Services and Code Enforcement basically share the responsibility and are the primary agencies that issue orders related to violations of the Building and Housing Code. So in an effort to step up enforcement, I did want to highlight, just as background, a couple of key initiatives that have happened. You mentioned earlier in your comments that we have already begun several things to try to address this problem. So recently, we created the VAP initiative for vacant and abandoned properties. That program came together to coordinate all city resources across a variety of departments to address the issue of residential vacant, vacant and abandoned properties. Also earlier this year, we enhanced the criminal penalty. We made it more severe and allows now for 60 days in jail and up to $1,000 per day as a criminal charge for anyone who's in violation of the Building and Housing Code. So those initiatives have certainly been things that have helped to deal with the problem. While VAP has been extremely successful, for example, in addressing the residential vacant and abandoned properties, commercial properties have represented a greater challenge for enforcement. So as you mentioned, a lot of commercial properties are owned by LLCs and corporate entities, and that represents part of the issue. Basically, we have two options available to use for enforcement. We have a civil complaint that we can file that would result in contempt of court if not complied with, and we also have the criminal process that I just mentioned that allows the jail time and $1,000 per day. But for these commercial properties, the civil process can be challenging, due to the length of time that's typically involved in bringing resolution to a particular case. We have service requirements, extensions, delay tactics, legal maneuvering, et cetera, that often contribute to these cases taking months, if not years, to get resolution. And besides that, you mentioned the criminal process is not effective because the LLCs and the corporate entities are difficult to hold accountable on a criminal basis. And they use those, those can be used to shield the owners and avoid that criminal liability. So what we have is essentially a proposal that's similar to the criminal penalty of $1,000 per day that already exists. The challenge, as I said, is it's difficult to use with LLCs and corporate entities. So the proposal is to add a code section that mirrors the criminal code section, allowing for $1,000 per day as a civil penalty for properties that are deemed a severe public nuisance. This financial penalty is consistent with the criminal process, and it basically can be used now with LLCs and corporate entities. I wanted to highlight that it would require a special notice and due process appeal rights to the respective boards in the departments, and those, this process would be in addition to the penalties that are already available. I also want to highlight that the monies that would be collected from this civil penalty would go into the land management fund, and they would, that would help maintain and stabilize buildings that are acquired by our land bank and allow them to be sold for productive use rather than be demolished. So I know one of the things you mentioned, and one of the things I wanted to highlight, is what this process would look like. What would it look like for, you know, this process to be implemented? So first and foremost, orders would always be issued. You would have either Code Enforcement or the Building Department that would issue an order of violation notice. Those themselves have appeal rights. If there was no compliance and the property main, state in the state of a public nuisance, we would issue a second notice declaring the property to be a public nuisance and indicating that if compliance is not obtained, a civil, this new civil penalty could be implemented. If we remain in a noncompliant state, a third notice would go out actually indicating that the civil penalty is being assessed. So you have three separate notices and appeal rights and due process associated with all of those notices before you would ever get into a situation where the penalty is actually being assessed. On top of that, in order to enforce or collect the penalty, we would have to institute an actual collection action, which allows for additional opportunity to challenge or have due process associated with it. So the appeals would be heard by the respective department boards first, the Building Commission for the Building Department, and the Property Maintenance Appeals Board for Code Enforcement. I think, you know, the key advantages of this new, this new civil penalty are, first, it's quicker. As I mentioned, the civil process can, can be lengthy and cumbersome. This process can happen much quicker. It substantially increases the consequences to owners who just continue to ignore orders and continue to be in violation of the codes. It serves as a deterrent for ignoring maintenance and upkeep of properties and maintaining a public nuisance, and it prevents owners from hiding behind the shield of an LLC or corporate entity. And I mentioned earlier, it also allows for monies collected to go towards improving the problem that we have with the vacant abandoned properties. So recently, we held a press conference that released 10 properties that were meant to be examples of what we're talking about. For lack of a better word, a top 10 list of commercial public nuisance properties that would give folks an idea of the kind of properties that we're talking about. We have some criteria that we used. The criteria to choose those properties included four things that you'll see here: currently vacant and unsafe with outstanding orders, a long history of neglect, we have been unable to get compliance through the current legal process, and there's been no recent efforts of any kind towards compliance. No permits, no plans, nothing that would indicate a plan to bring these properties into compliance. And for tonight's hearing, I wanted to just include a few pictures to show you the type of properties that we're talking about. So you can see the first photo there shows an empty warehouse-type property. Second picture shows you the kind of damage and the kind of properties. These properties have been this way for years in each one of these cases. So we're not talking, you know, something that happened last month or the month before. They've main, they've been in this state for a long length of time. And you can see a couple more there, and finally, this picture here. So these are the kinds of properties that we're talking about, and I think everyone would agree, being able to address issues like you see on these photos is a very important thing to be able to do. So thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to give you that summary. Certainly, I'll answer any questions that you may have. Director Shoney from the Department of Development, you mentioned earlier, is also here. I don't know, Director, if you'd like to make any comments?
Councilmember Mills, thank you for helping us on this legislation and having this opportunity for us to present and to listen to public comment. I think Director Messer did a fantastic job of laying out both the legislation, the process, and in addition to those, the intent. Our intent in this really is to have an additional tool to achieve compliance with our housing and building code. We have found that the tools that we have today, in many, in some cases, not many, in some cases, are not sufficient. Our plan is to be very targeted, very thoughtful in how we approach this. We recognize that this is a change in our penalties, and we think it's an appropriate change, and we plan to work together very closely to ensure that we implement this in a very thoughtful and fair manner. So otherwise, I think Director Messer did a fantastic job of outlining the legislation. I don't have anything of substance to add.
Thank you both. I want to acknowledge that our city attorney, Richard C. Pfeiffer, has joined us. Thank you, city attorney. It's good to see you. Again, I want to reiterate that our work as a city as a whole with several different strategies to address blight is to be commended. We have quite a bit of ways to go. I think, again, this step is another great step. And I know that we've been in several meetings, Director Messer, on this, but I would like you to elaborate on a couple of the points that I think is important to share with the listening and viewing audience this evening. And one of those things is, when we look at that top 10 list, and I know the list you had presented to me before, had other folks on there that we've had some conversations with, but have demonstrated some plans, and that's why they're not in the top 10, that there has been some, can you elaborate on rising to the top of that point in those? And when you say some real movement towards trying to address the concerns with their properties?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mills. We, as you mentioned, this is not the first step that we have taken to try to address this serious problem. So we do have many properties beyond these 10. I brought some numbers with me tonight just to share. This, this year alone, up to this point, we have written over 100 orders on properties that are unsafe and dangerous. We've written almost 300 orders on residential properties that are unsafe and dangerous. So to give you the scope and perspective, even though we've published a top 10 list, certainly there are numerous other properties that are problems and of concern. But as I said, when I mentioned the criteria that we were looking at, that this new process would be most useful in, there are a number of other properties where we're already in litigation, where the civil process is underway, where they, where there has been some level of compliance, where we are partnering with owners. Maybe it's just a lack of resources and some other issues that are challenging, and we try to work, after all, what we all want is, you know, for these properties to not be a blight on our community, and we want to partner with folks. But as Director Shoney mentioned, there are these subset of cases where you have resistant owners and you have problems with the current process being able to be used. And these 10 properties represent a subset of a larger group of properties that are, that challenge us. But as we get compliance on these, we, you know, as properties stay in noncompliance for a long period of time, they'll rise to the top, and we'll focus on those as well.
Thank you. And just your numbers suggest a much more swifter and more impactful tool needs to be applied when we have large numbers that we have now in time that has gone by. And I think we have certainly talked about this quite a bit, and wanting to make a citywide approach because we know that there are some neighborhoods that are more disproportionately affected, but we want a citywide approach to this. Can you also elaborate a little bit more in terms of, when we look at time and compliance and speak to some who may have concerns with time of compliance and talk a little bit about that, as you talked a little bit about our ability to work with folks to get to compliance and understanding some things that interrupt the timeline? Can you elaborate a little bit more?
Sure. Yes, Councilmember Mills. As far as the timelines go, as I indicated before, this penalty is intended to be the type of penalty that, that would address problem properties that have remained in noncompliance for months and months, if not years. It's not intended to be the first resort step. As I mentioned before, we would write building orders on a property that would have timelines associated with it. So a typical unsafe structure would give an owner 30 days to at least begin the process of addressing the problem. So it's not just 30 days to, to fix your property and make it perfectly fine. It's 30 days to come in, to present some plans, and to have an idea of where we're headed for compliance. It would only be after noncompliance of that order that you would move to the next step, which would be the public nuisance finding that I indicated, which also would give additional timelines for compliance. And then finally, the civil penalty notice would give additional time for compliance. So even if you just looked at the minimum standards, there are months of time that would accumulate between those notices before this penalty would go into effect.
You brought me to my final point. Can you go over a little bit about how we define public nuisance?
Yeah, so public nuisance right now is defined in both of our codes. The Housing Code has a definition of public nuisance, and the Building Code has a definition of public nuisance. If you look at the Building Code definition of a public nuisance, it is a property that is in a dilapidated, decayed, unsafe, or unsanitary condition that is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare or well-being of the surrounding area. It also talks about fire hazards and some other things, but that's, that primarily captures the definition of what we're talking about. Unsafe, dilapidated, you see the pictures on the screen, these are the kind of properties that we're talking about.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate it. And thank you, Director Shoney, for your comments. And I'm going to offer the opportunity for the city attorney to provide any comments, if you have any.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Let me introduce the folks that are with us. I am Rick Pfeifer, City Attorney. Steve Dunbar is with me to my right. To the right is Jaisa Page, Shayla Favor, and Kristen Croflich. These are four of our five attorneys who are under Zona Initiative. They're in the communities every day. We're here to respond to any questions that folks might have relative to this legislation.
Thank you, City Attorney. And I'm going to share with the audience that there are five minutes more to turn in speaker slips for the public testimony portion of tonight's hearing. I also want to acknowledge Sheri from Councilmember Craig's office, and Gretchen as well, Councilmember Klein's office, has joined us. I'm gonna, it is time now for us to move to public testimony. I didn't see any speakers. Oh, there they are. They appear. We have one speaker on tonight's hearing, Mr. Dimitri. I'm not going to embarrass myself and take a stab at pronouncing your last name. If you'll please state your first and last name. You're addressing any organization that you represent, and thank you for coming tonight to speak on the proposed legislation. Good evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. City Attorney Pfeifer, my name is Dimitri Hatzifotinos, and I'm an attorney. I work at Willis Law Firm. My address is 141 East Town Street, Columbus, and I represent the Columbus Apartment Association. And on behalf of the Apartment Association, I'd like to start off by just saying that the Apartment Association is representative of over 100,000 residential rental units in central Ohio, most if not all of which are in LLCs, and many of which also own commercial properties. And as a general idea, we are behind the intent of this legislation. We believe that the criteria for the top 10 list that was just presented is a good criteria, and we're understanding that the legislation is meant to apply to a subset of properties that are dilapidated that present a blight on the community. However, we believe that the legislation as written is not tailored narrowly enough to deal with that subset. While I agree with Director Messer that the definition of nuisance includes everything that was said, we also believe that the definition of nuisance as written in the current code is broad enough that it would take our membership with any code violation and potentially expose them to dealing with this legislation in terms of abating a public nuisance and the civil penalty. And while I completely understand that the administrative process described is meant to have safeguards against a compliant owner having to deal with this process, I don't think the legislation actually as written has those safeguards in it. So we've reviewed this legislation, and we have some thoughts and some recommendations that we'd like to bring to your attention. First and foremost, we'd like to have this legislation and this process limited to buildings which are not fit for occupation or human habitation, buildings that are so dilapidated that have gone through so many orders, that are so far gone that they are within that subset, and we think that if the legislation were more narrowly tailored to that, it would still encompass everyone in your top 10 and buildings that are truly unsafe. Secondly, we would like something in the legislation that deals with reasonable compliance. While I understand the administrative process, and I appreciate everything that's being done administratively, the legislation should take out individuals who are compliant from the possibility of dealing with a $1,000 per day civil penalty. So if there's compliance, either a Property Maintenance Appeals Board or, or even the officers themselves should be directed legislatively that the fine can't be imposed as compliance is going. I don't have specific criteria with me, but I can present some at a later time if necessary. Ultimately, we also would like to see a, a more direct approach at providing notice of the appellate process. Publication notice is one of the things that could be used to notify an owner, and, and we're not quite sure what reasonable means of identifying an owner would be at the administrative process, but we want to make sure that our constituents are actually informed. Many of them have, and so forth. I have more, but I know my time is up. I appreciate the time to comment, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Hatzifotinos.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you for sharing your comments. I have two questions for you, if you allow me, and a couple of comments in terms of what you shared this evening. In terms of buildings that are to the point where no one can even habitate, huh, live in those properties, I'm going with that. I am a bit under the weather. I believe that we have already, within our purview, the opportunity to issue a vacate order when it gets to something like that. So I don't know that that's quite where we are. It's sort of, what we're looking at is a little bit more of a tool on the civil side. Can I, can we agree there? And then my other point, the notice section, if I'm not mistaken, is a notice section that we use throughout the city code. And I'm going to also give the city attorney an opportunity to respond to your comments, if you have any response to Mr. Hatzifotinos' comments. City Attorney?
Chair Mills, my concern is, and I'm sure the witness will come forth later, it's important that folks who have concerns come forward with specific language as to how they would propose to amend the bill. Please understand that we have a service process now where an owner is notified, in the first instance, by the code enforcement officer. So notice should not be an issue here. A code officer will identify the owner, whether it's the building rep or the code officer, and will serve the owner of record of the potential violations. My concern is that while some folks will come in and say this can be draconian, that you be careful not to water down the bill to the point that you're only having a few bills, a few buildings applicable to this. The theory behind this bill is simply this, and I think it's the practice of the city. You will find the city a cooperative entity when trying to get compliance with the code. It is those cases where, for whatever reasons, we cannot motivate the owner to take seriously the owner's responsibilities. The need for this kind of legislation is to provide that economic incentive to move that owner at a potential economic loss to start doing something. All these LLCs and artificial entities do create a problem for us. Yes, we can charge them criminally. However, if there is no appearance on the part of an LLC, we can't get the court have jurisdiction. If it's an individual who doesn't show up for court, we can order the court arrested. Now, I know the U.S. Supreme Court has said that corporations are persons, but we can't put a corporation in jail. The other thing we face, quite frankly, is a lot of times, these LLCs really are without sufficient assets in many cases to even do the work. So we need some kind of remedy where we can start to accumulate a fine, where if it's not going to be complied with, we can attempt to move this property to a foreclosure sale and get a responsible owner. But I would simply say to the witness that his presence here is appreciated, but it's necessary to come forward with specific language as to how the bill, from their view, should be improved, and from our view, be concerned about you're going to water it down.
Thank you, City Attorney. And I would agree with you that if there is some suggested language or thoughts about it, that that would, could be passed on to my office. I'm more than willing to hear from you. And then you mentioned about inadvertently affecting some of your members. I want to say, is there an example you can provide me where you feel this would inadvertently impact someone that is not intended to impact?
Well, if I may respond just globally, first of all, with respect to impacting members, we have concerns because we've seen from our membership in the past where notice has been served to a corporate office. I'll think of one off the top of my head, to one of my clients in Minnesota at a corporate address. address, when they have over 5,000 units in Columbus, each of which has a property management office there. And oftentimes, they're getting orders that are 20 days old because they don't have actual notice in hand on the ground. They're getting certified mail service to, to Minnesota or somewhere like that. So procedurally, we're concerned because if that happens using the notice provisions that already exist in your code, and then we're going to court to address that, then my clients and our constituents have procedural protections with the court process that would safeguard against that. And at the same time, the penalty being $1,000 a day is meant to affect the worst of the worst in terms of that subset according to the criteria that was listed. So if there's a, there's a code order that is, you know, a 30-day compliance, and we're working together and, and we're, we're trying to interact together, then that, then that fine could be staggered, for example, to give our constituents the, the knowledge and the thoughtfulness to say, well, if we're complying and it takes us a little longer than, than 30 days, maybe it's 35 days, maybe those next five days have a $5 a day penalty. And I'm not talking in specifics now. I'm just saying that that staggering of a penalty would then make your subsets different depending on how cooperative they are, depending on what the interaction is with the administration. And instead, the way this is written, this would trigger a $1,000 a day penalty as soon as a nuisance is declared, and that penalty wouldn't necessarily abate during the appeals process. While I understand that that penalty has stayed during the appeals process, if the appellate body decides that in fact there was a nuisance, that penalty is retroactive to the date of the notice, so you could be looking at $45,000, according to your code, in potential penalties even until the time your appeal decision comes out. And so those concerns are concerns that we have because there is not a step-by-step process legislatively for how this would increase and only affect the subset that it's intended to affect. Practically, the legislation as written would affect everybody equally, and the administration, I think, is saying, well, we're only going to use it to affect the worst offenders. But we would like it more narrowly tailored. I was, I did have an opportunity to present comments in writing to your office. I have not redone the legislation. I'd be happy to try to take a stab at doing that, but we've had insufficient time. I think we got, we haven't had this for very long, so I'd be happy to try to do that as well.
Well, again, I appreciate your comments and would welcome any information you'd like to send my office at any time. But we have been working on this some time, and I want to say that our public announcement was about more than 30 days ago, it seems like. It feels that way anyway. So again, I welcome any additional comments. And thank you for coming to tonight's hearing.
Thank you for your time.
I want to offer some closing comments in, in, related to this particular proposed legislation, as well as, as our intentions and efforts when it comes to enforcing and deterring. Number one, our, our hope is that property owners avoid from the state of a nuisance. And avoiding this, falling in the state of a nuisance could avoid all the rest. We want properties to avoid falling in the space of being considered a nuisance. That's first. And once that happens, that avoids the rest of it from applying. So if we stay in the space of being a nuisance, then the rest of how we operate, apply when, how, then, and if, does not come into effect. Let's not create properties that are nuisance to our city. Starting there, I think, prevents the rest. However, understanding things happen, I believe that our intention is to work with property owners to avoid it, to correct, and to make sure that folks are compliant. And that is our responsibility to the other folks who are living around the nuisance property each and every day. And again, in terms of what the city attorney offered in comments of watering down the legislation, it's accurate. It's almost as if you take a funnel, and if you narrow and define it all the way down to the final, you may not capture some things that you need to capture and have the things that you need, and then inadvertently, it's so tight, even some things still fall through. And so we have to find a place on the funnel line that allows us the tool we need to capture as many of the folks we need to address with the large numbers we have, but also at a point where it gives us a chance to move things forward, the things we want to get through. And that's those who are complying. We want to capture and catch those who are not before they become a nuisance, as I started off in my comments. The goal is avoid properties from becoming a nuisance. We really want to use this as a deterrent, that being our primary. But if, in fact, it has not deterred some people, we want to have the tools to do something to correct them. So again, the goal is to, number one, avoid properties from being declared a nuisance. And one of the reasons I asked Director Messer to go over the definition of a nuisance is because if you understand it and hear it and witness it in photos, you wouldn't want to live next to it. You wouldn't want that to multiply in any neighborhood or any city to become a pervasive problem. It's not what we want to say about our city. So I will continue to hear from those who would like to share any additional comments regarding this legislation with my office. Please feel free to contact me. But again, I want us to look at avoiding properties from becoming a nuisance. That's first. Deterring is there, but also a tool to help, to help us when those things still happen, the things that still get through that we don't want. Again, thanking all of those who have worked on this legislation to getting us to tonight, to even having proposed legislation to think about and to consider. Thanks for coming to the, for those who are here and for those who are watching at home. Thank you for paying attention. We're looking forward to passing this legislation before the New Year, so I encourage those comments, questions, and language to please find your way to my office sooner than later. And again, I appreciate everyone, and please have a safe and warm evening. This concludes tonight's hearing. Thank you.